Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Porter.
I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lane. Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Clay.
Present.
Councilmember Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember Seaver. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Despite the fact that we have a few councilmembers not here at this point, we do have a quorum and can proceed. The next item is council comments and announcements, and I wanted to just bring people up to date on what's happening with the issues surrounding the Tacoma Metro. As I'm sure people know, there's been a lot of discussions in the last few weeks about whether the proposed development of the Tacoma Metro is going to move forward or not. There was scheduled on Thursday a meeting to approve the staff report, which the final date for comments was on Friday. And as a result of a request by County Executive Ike Leggett, the staff report approval has been postponed. Trying to get some more information on exactly what's happening when. I've heard different accounts from different places, but there isn't something happening on Thursday, that we know. And we -- there were some extremely thoughtful and helpful letters submitted by a number of people, residents of the city of Tacoma Park. Our staff, Suzanne Ledlow did a very good set, very complete set of comments that the city submitted. There were very helpful letters submitted by a number of elected officials. And I'm gonna forget. Obviously County Executive Leggett submitted a letter expressing some concerns on the right on use of the property if the development went through as proposed. Our state delegation submitted at least a couple that I know of letters with concerns. Mark Elrich on the county council, Valerie Irvin. I'm sure there were others that I'm not familiar with, but there were a lot of elected officials who supported us, as well as groups within the city who submitted comments. I believe that the Business Association, the Old Town Business Association submitted comments, the Old Town Residents Association, either as an entity or a number of individuals within the organization submitted comments. There is a great deal happening on this right now, and I think most of it is very positive. And the comments that I've seen have all been very thoughtful. And at the very least, it has caused Womata to step, take a step back and think about some of the issues that I think they thought were just a done deal. So I wanted to just say thank you to everybody who spent all of last week pulling together comments on what was an extremely long staff report and, in my view, didn't cover a number of issues. And so those are always difficult things to comment on. So I appreciate everybody who's been working on that. And I'm sure someone else is gonna comment on the street festival. So I will let somebody else do that.
One of the things that I was gonna mention was the street festival, and I figured other people were gonna comment on it as well. So I'll just say about the street festival, that it was wonderful as usual. And it was the twenty-sixth street festival, and the music was superb as usual, and a great turnout. And the only thing was a little bit of hot weather. But I imagine that, given the alternative, some years of pretty cold weather.
Or rain.
We'll take the hot weather. I also attended the International Walk to School Day last week at Piney Branch Elementary. And a number of our police officers were there as well, and some other city staff, and all of the kids from Piney Branch Elementary gathered in the parking lot at the Franklin and Walk to School. And this year, the buses dropped kids off there so that all the kids who ride buses to school could also participate in Walk to School Day. And it was a wonderful event. I do have to say that it brought to mind something for me that, thinking about, I don't know, how we walk to school back in my day, and thinking about--
Uphill both directions.
Yes, exactly. And what I did was I kind of transposed that with a number, the large, my perception of the large number of parents who drive their kids to school these days. And I just hope that those parents remember that as they talk about the increased traffic in this region and the difficulties with rush hour and pollution from all of those vehicles, that they remember that and maybe provide more opportunities for their kids to walk to school more often. I also just wanted to let folks know that I do have copies of the minutes of the municipal revenue sharing task force meetings that have taken place. So if anybody wants to get a copy to see what those are, that's the County-City Group that has been meeting to discuss municipal revenue sharing. Also, point out to my colleagues that you should have all received invitations to the COG 50th Gala. And to encourage you to attend, I've been asked by the executive director to make a little push and make sure that everybody knows that you and a spouse or partner are welcome, and it should be a wonderful evening down at the Mellon Auditorium. I think it's November 15. And it should be a lot of fun, so send back your RSVPs.
And Carol Schwartz chaired the committee.
And Mayor Porter was on the committee.
For a while, yes. But the point I was gonna make is that Carol Schwartz obviously missed her calling. Had she not been on the DC Council, she could have been an event planner, and she does a very good job.
And a fundraiser.
Well, that too. That goes with being an event planner, I think.
Well, I'm gonna attend the COG event, and for the first time, I'm gonna take my partner. I wanted to ask you, the committee meeting minutes that you have, those are of the staff. That's the staff level meeting. Do we have any information on when the meeting of the elected officials, we're gonna have a secondary meeting, when that's gonna occur?
I don't know that there is gonna be, you're talking about the advisory group that we all volunteered for. Apparently, the only people who volunteered for the advisory group were us.
You and I.
So we can have our meeting whenever we want.
Excellent. Okay, well, that's good to know. I did attend the street festival this weekend, and it was spectacular. My five-year-old went, and the bouncy, the bouncy part is her absolute all-time favorite part. But I have to say that as I was walking through the festival, I really enjoyed a few of the musicians, especially the performers that are at the gazebo stage, just really terrific this year. And my sister-in-law, Kathy Clay, and her mom Jenny Conlon are in town. And we were talking today about what it is that is enjoyable about Tacoma Park, and they went to the festival and very much enjoyed the festival. And I said, "Well, you know, this is the kind of thing that's so great about Tacoma Park, is that we have a few of these events. We have the Jazz Festival, and we have the Street Festival, and we have the Folk Festival, and we have the House and Garden Tour. And there's always something good happening in Tacoma Park." And I think that it's really what makes this place such a great community. And then let's move on to a couple of the challenges that are currently occurring in my ward. Street lighting and dealing with Pepco. I mean, dealing with WSSE is a major headache, but dealing with Pepco is not much more pleasant because we just get ignored to death. And so, you know, I've sent several lists that show the poll number for the polls that are out. I haven't been to check and see if they've replaced the lights on Heather Avenue yet, but one of the areas where we're having trouble, we actually don't have a street light. And I discussed this with the planning folks sometime over the last year because we were talking about it when we were talking about dealing with Elm Avenue at Ethan Allen. As you come around the corner at Ethan Allen there on Elm, there's no street light until you essentially get down what is, you know, three full houses into the area where the traffic circle is. And we've had two muggings in that area in the last 30 days. And it's really dark right there, and we're getting these young guys that are pretending like they're hanging out at the bus stop, and then they just follow someone on down the hill. And you can get into this area, and it's incredibly dark there. And of course, we have all these beautiful trees, so even when there's moonlight out, there's no moonlight there, and they're kind of pulling people back into a driveway. I noticed on the Pepco website that they say that they can actually expedite lighting if you have safety concerns, and so was hoping maybe we could look into getting a street light in this area. Before we had the muggings, we had the problem of other kinds of activities by young people occurring as they pulled around the corner into the dark area there. We kind of shooed that along, but maybe that was even more preferable for the muggings. But it'd be great if we could, if we could do something about that. And I know that this is an ongoing issue with Pepco getting them to be responsive about the lights, but anything that we could do in that vein would be good. And one more comment is, so I responded, the neighbor, I guess, called the police and then called me, and so I went over. And it was very interesting listening to the police interview the person who was the victim. It sounds like he went back to the place, and someone else called the police, and he called and canceled all of his credit cards, but also his cellphone. And we found this out because the police actually had, they responded right away, and they had people, and they were, they were, they had a sort of general description, and were looking at people that were walking in the general area away from where the scene was. And they wanted to know the guy's cellphone number, because that was one of the things that were stolen, because they were gonna, since the police were around them, following them and watching them, they were gonna call the cellphone, see if the cellphone rang, but he had already shut off his cellphone. And I hadn't thought about that, maybe leaving your cellphone on for a while so that the police could call the burglar. So that's what I have to share for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Last week, I read a little announcement out of the city newsletter that bus was gonna pick up residents here at the community center and at the Franklin Apartments and at Victory Towers to take them to the farmer's market over at the Tacoma Langley Crossroads. And the bus never came. And I wonder if the staff could check and find out who's supposed to be running the bus and what happened, and how we can get in touch with them. Appreciate it.
Yes, I wanted the council just to be aware that the Tacoma Park Elementary School expansion proposal is being actively discussed by parents and school officials. I was just before this meeting at another meeting, and I'm aware of a meeting that's coming up Thursday, October 11th, with school officials, where they're talking about transit issues or transportation issues if students are temporarily relocated to the Grosvenor School. So there's a lot of concern among parents about that right now, and I'll keep you informed as things progress, but right now, that's the thing that people want the most answers about. And I think that exploring all of the options is what the school will need to do in order to satisfy parents.
Okay. We have no additional agenda items, so the next item is the public comment period. This is the time set aside on the agenda for comments on items that are not on our regular meeting agenda. If you have comments on other items, this would be the appropriate time to come forward and make your comments. I'd ask if you could identify yourself when you come forward, and if you could keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. Someone was asking me if the city has any plans for the children for Halloween or the elderly for Halloween this year, if they're having any parties or any thing going on because of, like you were saying, the streetlights are out, and other people were saying, you know, that the crime is rising. We're, I'm a little nervous about the high crime rate, you know, the high rate of children disappearing throughout the United States. If there's any way we could like have, you know, have like a citywide party or each ward have a party. That'd be nice, have each ward have a party. Or have, have, and a couple of adults lead, lead a group of children around so that we could actually guarantee that there wouldn't be any snatches or any robberies or any muggings on that night. Because I really worry about this every time on Halloween. At that time, really, I start getting nervous as the holidays approach. Because, as you know, that's one of the highest times the childrens go out to, you know, to celebrate their holiday. Halloween is a children's holiday. And wondering if the city is doing anything about that.
Generally, we have Halloween parade and costume judging, and then a party on the weekend before Halloween. And I know that on the date of Halloween, there's usually increased police presence around the city. And I see the chief nodding. I assume we're gonna do that again. The officers are quite aware that children are out there. I think we've been very fortunate, and we haven't had, you know, any serious problems with children, but we certainly want to keep it that way.
We have just been blessed, that's all. And also, maybe they should ask each adult to leave their fort light on where they're having trick-or-treating, and not to leave their fort light on and keep their eyes out for the safety of children. Also, I want to remind people, they've only got 29 days before they can vote. Now, I hear a lot of people complaining about taxes, about this, about the metro, about the street crime, but nobody's out there voting. A lot of people are not saying, "Well, I don't want to bother voting," but do you know how good it felt for me when I was turned 18 and I was able to say, "I voted, I care for my city?" Well, a lot of people don't realize that we allow, you know, non-citizens to vote, and we allow other people to vote, and we are a city, we are a city of diversity. We have got to get people across, to message across to the people that we do have a diverse city, and we do encourage people to vote, and we do want to get people out there to vote. We only got 29 days left. And it's a very awful feeling to hear in my city, "Well, I didn't vote. I don't bother with that." But how can they complain about it if they didn't bother with it? You know, and we've gotta do something about that.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay. And also, I want to tell people that tomorrow, I'm having a heart catheterization. If I feel a little nervous, that's why. That tomorrow, 2:00, I'm having a heart catheterization. They've been finding problems with my heart. And just safe breath me out there, okay?
Well, we certainly wish you well and hope your test is helpful and given with your condition.
I'm sure it's gonna be helpful. But I'm still gonna get out there to vote. Don't worry about that.
Good for you.
Even if I have to change an appointment, I will be out there to vote. And I encourage everybody out there to get out there, get up off their kiezers and vote. It's not that hard to do.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks for letting me share.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, I'm Rosalind Grigsby. I'm Executive Director of the Old Tacoma Business Association, and I'm really just here tonight to say thank you to the city for all the backup support you provide for the street festival, which was yesterday. So I left you each a program guide because we put you on the cover, and I wanted you to see that. I particularly want to say thank you for the police support, Department of Public Works, the rec department, the city TV staff, administrative staff. I mean, it was really an amazing backup for us. And I hope as many of you as were able came and enjoyed it. I thought it was a good, one of those very Tacoma Park things, a very community-oriented activity. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you and the Business Association for doing all the work to pull it together. And it seemed like a very successful event. I think every year I see more people there, so it must be getting a very good reputation.
I'm Josh Wright, Maple Avenue. I just want to say a quick thank you to the council as a group and individually for all the effort you put forward in putting pressure on the elected officials that can impact the Womata decision-related matter of sight. As you know, the residents have been working very hard on this issue, and I know that all of you publicly and behind the scenes have put forth a great effort this time and over the past seven years, so I want to thank you for that. And we all know the political battle is not over, so people out there listening at home continue to write the letters and send in the postcards. And I know that all of you will continue to put on the political pressure, and we'll find out what the outcome of why the delay was and figure out the best way to proceed. So thanks.
Well, thank you. And I know you did a lot of work on this too, Josh, so appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, the next item is the city manager's update.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. All right. We can move then directly into the presentation. We're very fortunate this evening to have a presentation, an earlier version of which I understand was given at the pedestrian safety summit. Is that, if I got the right title, the pedestrian safety summit? The presentation concerns pedestrian issues at the crossroads, and as I'm sure we'll hear, the crossroads is actually not only one of the most dangerous locations for pedestrians in this area, it's actually one of the most dangerous locations in the state. And so I'm sure we'll hear more about that. It's an area that the city of Tacoma Park has been very concerned about, and Erwin Mack, who is the, is the executive director of the CDA, is going to lead the presentation. So the council's gonna, I see you've got the projector lined up, so I assume we're gonna go sit in the first row of chairs so we can actually see the presentation.
Mayor Porter, council members, thank you for the opportunity of sharing something that's been going on for the last five years. This presentation was requested by the State Maryland Safety Highway Office early this year. And when they asked me to make a presentation to, in front of a couple of hundred people from all over the state of Maryland, it actually concerned me a bit that I could just stand up and talk for a half hour and have anybody take something away with them. And what occurred to me, I said, "This really needs to be a PowerPoint presentation." But I don't know how to make a PowerPoint presentation. I just know there's a keyboard in front of a screen on my desk, and I don't know what else that keyboard does. Besides that, I had a tremendous ally in an organization called CSafe. And I said to Maryland Highway Safety Office, "May I bring in a partner with me to make a joint presentation?" And they said, "Certainly, why not?" So Mary Kendall, Director of CSafe, and Gretchen Hillberger, Montgomery County Representative for CSafe, became my guardian angels and my guidance. And it's due to them that we have a PowerPoint presentation, because if it left up to me, I'd be still sharpening my pencil in a Boston pencil sharpener. These, remember, this was given to a group of people who had no clue where the intersection called the crossroads is. So some of this will be repetitious to you, but it will go past that quickly what I haven't explained about it. As you know, the Tacoma Langley Crossroads had this sign installed just about 18 years ago, and it's still the only major sign of welcome to Tacoma Park and looking forward to signage that the city is going to do. And we're gonna do this kind of elementary fashion, because normally Mary's standing next to me, so I'm gonna have to say beep or something for the next slide. Go ahead. This is an actual site. A 31-year-old Latino lady stepped off the curb approximately at this pole in front of what's now called the COP building in Prince George's County, near what used to be the Toys R Us. She was killed instantly. But we had eight predecessors to that, and it simply became a burden that the crossroads couldn't handle, commercially speaking, residentially speaking, and as God-fearing people. We had to do something about it. So we got to thinking about what could we do to help persuade people to be more safe. Tacoma Langley Crossroads is this intersection, of course, where you're all familiar with it, so we won't have to dwell on that. But it's where two counties, a city, and three police forces come together. It was labeled the third most dangerous intersection, according to State Farm Insurance, in 2003. The only two that were more dangerous was Lockwood and New Hampshire in the Silver Spring area, and one that was significantly more dangerous in the city of Baltimore. It's a transient community. The majority of the residents are apartment dwellers. It's also referred to as Maryland's International Corridor due to its obvious cultural diversity. We have incredible traffic, and these are not my figures. I received these from SJA, and we just last week upgraded this to the newest figures that the sector plan is showing, that 90,000 vehicles a day pass through the crossroads. That's an incredible challenge for pedestrians. It has the largest concentration of resident pedestrians in the state of Maryland. Notice the word "concentration" is underlined. That doesn't mean there are more people who cross the streets here than anywhere else. It simply means in the smallest amount of space, considered to be a half a mile from the crossroads. There are certainly more people in Baltimore and Washington, D.C., et cetera, but in the state of Maryland, we have the most pedestrians. We have 3,500 people who get on and off buses in the crossroads. Again, not my figures. MTA, RIDE ON, and others. And 50,000 bus riders go through the crossroads daily. 61 buses an hour go through the crossroads at peak time. You can see three buses lined up there. By the way, Mary and I and Gretchen took all these pictures, so we're not complaining about the perfection of them, we're trying to make a point of concentration of challenges. What happened in the crossroads? In December 2002, two mothers and two infants were involved in a pedestrian accident. Both infants were killed. That happened to have been just across the street from where the telephone pole has the cross that you saw earlier. And it really, really stirred me up. Two young women in their early twenties, one carrying an infant, one pushing a stroller, for some ungodly, unknown reason, stepped out in front of a car, and the same car hit all four of them simultaneously, killing one child immediately. Some of you will remember this, and the other one died shortly in the hospital. We've had numerous pedestrian driver accidents, and then nine pedestrian fatalities. In this picture, however, a shocker took place. This was happening during an event that CSafe will talk about shortly. We were there helping CSafe direct pedestrians across the street safely, and I looked over, and exactly the same spot where this original incident occurred, two women, hard for you to see here, one pushing a stroller with two children in it, pushing, holding a child, and another lady behind her with two children, came off the curb doing exactly the same thing that had happened five years before. It was, I was stunned, absolutely stunned. And Gretchen is right here, and Letitia Gali is from the University of Maryland, both of whom are bilingual. I'm not. I would have said words that-- I would've said words that would have required bilingual interpretation if I'd been any closer. But they really gave them a scolding. Yet they thought nothing of it, because they simply wanted to get across the street. So you can see why our concern. Next. We had, we are a business association of 158 businesses. We talked about what should we do to make a contribution to the, in the interest of pedestrian safety. And Dr. Bill Hannah of the University of Maryland and I put together a safety tip sheet for resident pedestrians within the crossroads in English, innocently enough in English. We were stunned to find that Lori Kelly, who is well-known to many of you here, found this sheet and said, "It's a good idea, but it won't work without Spanish." But even if you had been a translation of it, the majority of the people who receive it can't read in any language. So we were stunned as to what to do. We decided to sponsor a K-5 educational poster campaign, and at the same time formed a pedestrian safety committee, which led to the forming of the only multi-jurisdictional pedestrian safety committee in the state of Maryland, abbreviations of MPSC. When we started out as a small group, we found other people hearing about it, called and said, "May we join you?" To the point that we now have people, as many as 44 arrived last month at a meeting. And we solicit the, or send invitations, I should say, to some 60 people, but that many care, and they come from every jurisdiction, as you'll see in a moment. The reason was to persuade city, county, and state to make necessary modifications to maximize mechanical pedestrian safety. And the purpose was to assess the pedestrian safety needs in the Tacoma Langley Crossroads with multiple levels of government, the private sector, and faith-based communities, et cetera. These are the partners, whom I won't read, because there are 43 of them, but you'll notice that they're significant. We'll allow this slide just to be on long enough so you can get a good glance of the groups of people. These are not by name, but these are groups that want to be a part of it and have sent representatives to meet with us, from attorneys to bus driver coordinators, to MTA, to S.H.A., to construction people, to faith community, to education. You couldn't ask for a better cross-section of people to meet regularly to express concern about pedestrian safety. In addition, I want to point out some people that are well-known to you, and remember, I'm personalizing this to Tacoma Park. We have already mentioned Gretchen Hillberger. We mentioned Mary Kendall. We mentioned Elona Blanchard, who works for the city, and David Souls. And all through this whole thing, the Tacoma Park Police Department has been an incredible ally in conjunction with Montgomery County's Police Department, Prince George's County's Police Department, and the University of Maryland's Police Department, all of whom said, "We can learn from each other, let's work together." We identified needs that were absolutely foreign to the intersection. We couldn't believe, when we got serious about this thing, how poorly the signals of the crosswalks, the bus stops were coordinated. The word "coordination," as a matter of fact, didn't exist. And so we, I outlined why we wanted the following: align the crosswalks and traffic signals. We wanted to install median fencing, although that originally became a very, very volatile issue. And a great deal of discussion, in fact, some people got very warm about looking like Guantanamo. This was before the fence at Longwood, before the fence over Prince George's Mall, which now proved to be eminently successful. We were there first, but they got their fences first, and we'll explain that why in a moment. So finally, the conclusion was that there'd be no option but to put in a fence at the median emanating some 1,000 feet from the crosswalks in all four directions to force people to use best practices in crossing the street. We wanted to educate resident pedestrians, promote traffic and pedestrian law enforcement, both motorists, drivers, and pedestrians. And we certainly wanted to improve and provide bus shelters. Go ahead. We found to our surprise that the state conceded most of what we wanted, although it took a while. And to our really surprise, the former Lieutenant Governor came to the crossroads a year and a half ago and provided a surprise announcement that the state was not only going to do the pedestrian safety improvements, but was going to put in a transit center. This transit center, as I'm sure you know, is going to be at the location where the current Taco Bell is. The reasons that we are pleased is that we now have the following median improvements. This is an aged picture. In these recesses around this middle raised area are brick-like formations called stamped concrete. So it gives it a nice red brick look, although it's not brick. The fence itself, when it's installed, will only be four feet on top of the center divider, so that isn't going to be an eight-foot-high fence looking incredibly like a Guantanamo. But unfortunately, none of the fencing is going to go in until University Boulevard and New Hampshire are completed in terms of median improvements, curb improvements, and surface improvements, which means that it'll be at least another year before a fence is installed, since they're just barely starting on New Hampshire Avenue now. The state provided funds, and both counties dedicated $2.5 million in addition to the $10 million by the state of Maryland. And then education and enforcement's needs were to be given by Seasafe. One of the things that I stressed in the meetings that I've chaired for the last five years is that we wanted partners from these 43 people to do pedestrian safety efforts in their own light. And how will you do what you're going to do, whether you are part of a faith community, whether you're part of a police department, whether you're part of the educational system? And to my pleasant surprise, Seasafe became the most absolute supporter in the whole program. And Mary's here to tell you how Seasafe responded to the request of my challenge to the group as a quarterly meeting basis, what are you going to do about pedestrian safety in the crossroads.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving Erwin and I the time to provide this presentation to you. And as Erwin said, Seasafe did respond to the education and enforcement needs that were identified by the Multi-Jurisdictional Pedestrian Safety Committee. However, there were other organizations that responded as well, and I'd like to highlight the importance of International Walk to School Day, which just recently occurred at Piney Branch Elementary Middle School, and also takes place in the Tacoma Langley Crossroads at Langley Park McCormick Elementary School, which is coordinated by Lori Kelly. And also, the City of Tacoma Park Department of Housing and Community Development every year submits a grant application to the Safe Roots to School Program, which also provides a lot of additional resources needed in the Tacoma Park community to enhance pedestrian safety. In this first slide, we just talk about what is Seasafe. And I think everyone in this room is familiar with what Seasafe is, but what's most important is how it is that Seasafe actually achieves our goals and objectives. And we only have two staff in our office, but we do have many partners. And those partners range from the local government, partners from educational institutions, from residential properties, from the state government, from community and nonprofit organizations, from local businesses, and also national organizations. We have worked with over 46 partners since we've existed in 2001. And how it is that Seasafe responded to the needs that were identified by the Multi-Jurisdictional Pedestrian Safety Committee is that we coordinated joint enforcement and educational initiatives. And we received, there was participation from three different police departments, Prince George's County, Montgomery County, and Tacoma Park, and many volunteers from multiple agencies and organizations. We've coordinated a total of five initiatives since 2003. And the purpose of every event has always been to increase resident and driver awareness of pedestrian safety. And one thing that I'd like to point out in this picture is all of the pictures that we, that we took really tried to depict the need for education, awareness, and enforcement in the crossroads. It's a little difficult to see, but there's a bus that's going through the, that just took the turn here, and there's a resident or a pedestrian crossing directly behind the bus, which just doesn't seem very safe, especially in that intersection. So what do we do during these multi-jurisdictional pedestrian safety activities? Well, during these activities, police play both a community policing role and an enforcement role. As you can see in the picture, the officers are distributing educational brochures. However, they also end up issuing hundreds of warrants and, I'm excuse me, hundreds of citations and warnings to drivers and pedestrians. Of course, occasionally, what also happens during these pedestrian safety activities is police will end up serving warrants and occasionally be forced to make an on-scene arrest. So, sure. What happened here is this was around 1 o'clock in the afternoon. We were in the parking lot by the old place of the rest building. A woman, a Hispanic woman, she's in the back talking to the officer, Hispanic woman was walking through the parking lot towards a large group of police officers. There were at least 20, 25 police officers standing in the parking lot, getting briefed about the activity. And this gentleman, who is in the center of the large group of police officers, yes, he's being arrested, he assaulted her and threatened her with a pen, pointing as if he were to stab her with a, with a pen. So this Hispanic woman felt safe enough to come over to the police offices and report the incident that just occurred. And instantly, the officers jumped into action and made that on-scene arrest. We felt that was a successful day, because the police were in high visibility in the community, and they were able to achieve more than just one goal in that day. Next slide, questions? Okay. So also, not only are police in the community on that day during our activities, but we also had many, many, many volunteers. Over the years, we have had hundreds of volunteers participate in our pedestrian safety activities. The volunteers will distribute educational literature. Our volunteers speak multiple languages, which is very important in the international corridor, because they're the ones who can reach the entire community, not just, not just one particular race, culture, or language. The volunteers also encourage resident and visitor pedestrians to cross safely. So now, just to provide everyone with a little bit of a better flavor as to what we do during these events, there's just a series of pictures taken from our, from the pedestrian safety activities.
Let me interject something here, stay with you, Mary. The President of Columbia Union College is with us tonight, representing his institution, Dr. Gaspar Cologne, sitting in the front row. We welcome you and show you that your students were active. They really weren't playing hooky that day. And then while we have the opportunity of thanking other people, Dr. John Wagner represents the faith community on the Multi-Jurisdictional Pedestrian Safety Committee. So there, that plus the chief here, you have at least five members of that committee that are here this evening.
So that's a picture of Columbia Union College students, and every year they've participated and assisted us in distributing brochures. The next picture is a picture from, more or less demonstrating what the, how the enforcement operation happens. That's Sergeant Tom Harmon from the Montgomery County Police Department, waiting to cross the street in the crosswalk. And then what he does is, if a vehicle fails to yield to him while he is crossing, then farther down the street, an officer will pull the vehicle over and typically give them a warning.
Again, this being a shared presentation, something unique about this, this happens to be in front of the Safeway. And if you are familiar at all with the jurisdiction of the crossroads, Montgomery County only has half of the street. So Sergeant Tom has to stop in the middle of the street and reverse himself and go back, because the rest of the street's in Prince George's County. It took us a while to work that out, but Prince George's County didn't realize that they needed to cooperate, and they put an officer on their side of the street so that we could cover the entire University Boulevard instead of just half of it.
Okay. And this scene is really important, because not only do we educate hundreds of people in the street on the day of the activities, we also educate the thousands who end up watching TV. And we have had great participation, especially from the Hispanic media during these pedestrian safety activities. And they just help us get out the message about the importance of crosswalk safety. That's, that's Gretchen. Okay. And also, sometimes we like to have a bit of a holiday theme during our pedestrian safety activities. On this day, it wasn't Santa, looks like Santa Claus, but it really wasn't Santa Claus coming down the street. It was Erwin Mack coming down New Hampshire Avenue. Next slide. And here are some scenes of our volunteers in action. We have very proactive community volunteers who like to get involved. This day, they're just directing a pedestrian to use the crosswalk. And here's another scene of another one of our volunteers, you can see, wearing a safety vest, that is stopping somebody after he crossed the street unsafely to talk to him about what it is he did and why it's important to use the crosswalk. And there are some future challenges for both the Multi-Jurisdictional Pedestrian Safety Committee and Seasafe in the crossroads, is that being that the crossroads is such transient and culturally diverse community, the community capacity building in the area really needs to be sustained. On average, the majority of the residents in the crossroads live there for one to three years. And that's why our efforts need to be continued and sustained. And we'd also like to expand this effort beyond the crossroads, because there are other communities that are in need of the same awareness, education, and enforcement.
Last slide. This is just the contact information that we shared with those who didn't know much about us. And you can see the names of the three people who are responsible for this PowerPoint presentation. We are asking you, as a city council, to continue your good work in helping with pedestrian safety throughout the city, but in particular, the crossroads. And we found that we have to be consistent in our approach to the bodies who can help us, because unless you're persistent, other people's push gets ahead of yours. And for those of you who know me, my motto has been, "I'm not a pest, I'm responsibly persistent." And over the years, that has paid dividends, as long as it wasn't for personal gain. And we thank you for having watched what's happening at the crossroads.
Thank you. I appreciate that presentation, Erwin and Mary, even though it has been some months since you first gave it. Unfortunately, it's still very current in terms of the issues. And I think, you know, I think I've been to a couple of the events that you've held, and they're always very well-attended and always very good events. And I would just like to bring to the councils and everybody else, everyone else's attention something else that actually happened at that same summit. At that summit, they presented, I believe it was their first, let's see, the... Right, the first ever, I'm looking for the, for the proper name. The Diversity in... I'm sorry, I should've, I should've underlined this. Award to Erwin Mack, the winner of the first-ever 2000 Safety Diversity in Traffic Safety Award. This was given to Erwin Mack for his work in the crossroads at this Diversity in Traffic Safety Summit. And I'd like to read the, what it says on their certificate. It says, "Certificate of Appreciation. This certificate is presented March 26, 2007, to Erwin H. Mack in recognition for your invaluable contribution to traffic safety, exceptional commitment to Maryland's diverse community, and leadership of the Multi-Jurisdictional Pedestrian Safety Committee." And that was actually presented by Neil Peterson, who is the Director, the Administrator of the State Highway Administration. And we are very proud that Erwin Mack, who has been... And we are very proud that Erwin Mack, um, who has been a member of, was the founder on the board of until he retired. And in his retirement, he was the executive director of the Crossroads Development Authority. So you, you basically have been the Crossroads Development Authority for many, many years. And I appreciate all the work that you've done. And, um, I think that the, the story you told about recognizing the need for this effort on pedestrian safety and creating an entity that could carry forward that work is typical of a lot of things that you've done in the crossroads. It is a place of a lot of challenge. You mentioned the traffic. You also mentioned the three jurisdictions that come together at the crossroads. And actually, the three jurisdictions I know have always been a challenge. The reason that the CDA does not cross University Boulevard is because of an early challenge that you faced from the tri-jurisdictional nature of the crossroads. But you have really done a lot of work with that and not just in traffic safety, but in many other, um, aspects of that. And with that, I would like to go on to our first item, which is quite relevant. We wanted to do a, a couple of things this evening. One was to recognize the twentieth anniversary of the Tacoma Langley CDA. And the other is to very, most especially, recognize Erwin Mack. As I said, um, Erwin was the founder of the CDA over considerable obstacles twenty years ago. Um, he has, I believe you were on the Board of Directors since the very beginning up until your recent, um, retirement. And then, once you retired from your business, you were no longer eligible to be on the board because you were no longer a business member of the CDA. And so Erwin retired to become the executive director. Um, many people wouldn't call that retirement, but I suppose by comparison it is. Um, and so I'd like to, um, rec, I'd like to read this, um, uh, resolution that I'm going to put before the council. Recognizing the twentieth anniversary of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority and Erwin Mack as founder and executive director. Whereas the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Corporation was authorized by ordinance of the city council in 1987 for the purposes of promoting and marketing the businesses which make up the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Commercial District. And whereas the Tacoma Langley Crossroads is the community's largest and most diverse commercial center with more than thirty-five hundred thousand square feet of retail and office space located at the intersection of University Boulevard and New Hampshire Avenue. And whereas this November marks the twentieth anniversary of the establishment of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Association. And whereas through the dedicated efforts of the CDA, its Board of Directors, and its Executive Director, the organization has successfully advocated for more effective crime prevention, programming, pedestrian safety improvements, stronger code enforcement measures, streetscape improvements, and the funding and resources necessary to maintain the economic vitality of the business community. That's quite a few things. You know, it's squeezed into one whereas, but it's actually a lot of work over many, many years. Whereas much of the CDA's success is due to the tireless and determined efforts of its founder and executive director, Mr. Erwin Mack, who is, as he is known to declare, and you mentioned this just earlier this evening, he is not a pest, just responsibly persistent. And whereas the community as a whole and the Tacoma Langley Crossroads businesses in particular have benefited greatly from the work of the CDA and Mr. Erwin Mack. Now, therefore be it resolved that the, the Council of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland celebrates the twentieth anniversary of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority and its accomplishments. And be it further resolved that the council applauds the hard work and determination of Erwin Mack and recognizes his contributions to the success of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. I want to, I want to move this resolution in place before the council. It's been moved and seconded. Is there anyone else? Well, what I want to do with Erwin is we will, if the resolution passes, um, we'll give you a chance to add anything you would care to at the end. But is there anyone else who would like to address the resolution at this time?
When I came to Tacoma Park, uh, city manager Matthew said there were several people I needed to meet immediately. And in the first week, one of the first people I met was Erwin Mack for lunch. I was pretty lucky on that day because I learned later that I only saw a part of Erwin. He was sick that day. Was kind of calm and collective and rather mild-mannered, which Barbara informed me later, that's not the Erwin you're going to get to know. And I got to know Erwin over the last eight months. If something's happening down in the crossroads, he generally knows even before our dispatcher's is on the phone or on an email to me what's happening, where he knows and tells me so I can be updated. Uh, he's been a pleasure to work with. He is persistent, but, uh, he's a partner that's fun to work with because when you have something and you ask him for his help, he knows where to go and he knows who to call, and he is persistent. We had a problem with some day labors and a trespassing problem. He helped me get the information I needed so I can inform my officers to make us better informed in what we were doing down there. He was a great help in that. We've worked together on pedestrian problems. If there's a problem down there, just about every business owner will go to Erwin. He'll come to me and we can work together. He's a partner that, for the city of Tacoma Park and especially for its police department and the C-Safe program, and I just want to thank him and commend him for a job. And I know he's doing long before I got here and he'll probably be doing it long after I leave.
Anyone else?
Gaspar Cologne from Columbia Union College. Um, about seven and a half years ago, I started teaching at Columbia Union College and developing a program in metropolitan ministry for our theology and religion majors. And, uh, encouraging future church workers and, uh, future, um, professionals to, to really take seriously working in the metropolitan areas and, uh, the issues that metropolitan areas face. And, uh, it didn't take long for, uh, for Erwin Mack to discover that I was there and visit me. You can't sneak into this community without somehow Erwin Mack finding you out and, uh, and involving you in, uh, every aspect of the community's needs, including the, uh, the safety issues. And I really appreciated that because he's gotten me involved in more things than I'd like to admit to.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cologne. We appreciate your being here. Is there anyone else that would like to add anything? Um, is there anything else that the council would like to add? Bruce?
Yeah, I, uh, I want to recognize Erwin's persistence and also his expertise at, uh, working the multi-jurisdiction aspect of just about everything he does. Um, a lot of people know that Tacoma Park is surrounded by other larger jurisdictions and we're, that's one of the things that we on the council and most people in, in dealing with issues that, uh, that we have to deal with, know that, uh, it takes some time and effort to, uh, work those connections, make those connections, uh, and kind of know how to, how to, how to work all that together. And, uh, Erwin is a master. And, uh, it's, it's a real skill and, uh, that combined with persistence makes for some wonderful results. And, uh, we saw some evidence of that tonight. And, uh, it's, it's a real talent and a real skill and, uh, you've done a great job and hope you continue to do a great job.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. And we'd just like to recall, uh, when I first met Erwin Mack, I was, uh, new in community activism and, uh, shortly thereafter, I was new on the city council. And through the years since I first met Mr. Mack, uh, I've learned a lot from him. Uh, I've learned a lot about how to address the issues that we see in our community. Whereas a lot of people bring problems to the podium here and, and ask us to, to solve their problems, uh, Mr. Mack did that, but he also presented, uh, his ideas for how to solve those problems. And I see his persistence not being, coming back to the podium time after time with the same thing and the same ideas, but his persistence was when he found, um, the progress wasn't being made, uh, he found new ways to approach it. He looked for new resources. He didn't wait for us to do something or someone else to do something. He just, uh, kept plodding ahead and it was like, "I need your help for, with this and I'm going to keep reminding you I need your help, but I'm going to, I'm going to go on. The party's going to go on without you if you don't get on board." And, um, uh, it's, it's been, uh, fun watching, uh, Mr. Mack and I hope to learn many more things, uh, in his, uh, work because he's very successful. You look at what the Tacoma Langley Crossroads area is now compared to where it was five years ago, uh, it's grown incredibly and it's, uh, a much better neighborhood because of the work that Mr. Mack has done and the people that he's brought into the fold with him. And I thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say that I think that the community is much better because you're, you're here and thank you for everything that you do. There's a young man who lived on my street who was, um, hit by a car when he was in a crosswalk and was killed. And his, his family deeply misses him. There was a young boy in the household and, and this young man was his uncle, but he was also his, his male role model in the household that was, you know, in that, in that age range. Um, and I know that there are a lot of people whose lives are impacted by the things that you have done to improve the community that don't even know it. And, um, so I'm grateful that you're there and, um, helping to reduce those kinds of incidents and, and just make the community better and, and safer and help protect those of us that are here. So I thank you for that and I thank you on, on behalf of the constituents that I have for that as well.
Yes, I, I also want to thank Erwin for his great presence in our community and the, um, the, the mini-gifts that he shares with, um, this council and the residents and the business people. Um, I, you're, you're really one of a kind and I'm, I'm glad that we can recognize you today and, um, I'm, I'm very glad that you'll continue serving with the CDA.
Yeah. And I just, sitting up here, I thought of one more thing that I have to mention. And that is that you didn't just tilt at local jurisdictions in coming up with issues that had to be dealt with, but I recall changing the zip code and that you had to deal with the postmaster. And you had to deal with, uh, federal officials and, uh, our, uh, our representatives in Congress and, uh, trying, trying to get the zip codes aligned with the, with the city border so that businesses that were in Tacoma Park, Montgomery County, did not have a Hyattsville, whatever the zip code is, two oh seven eight three, um, which, uh, had difficulties for customers trying to get taxis called to pick them up in the, uh, CDA. And, uh, issues like that, there are really big issues that affect, uh, the quality of life for a lot of people. And, uh, you didn't shy away from that. And, uh, it's, it's just indicative of the kind of thing that you tackle successfully.
I, and just, I just wanted to add something to that. Um, as we were working on the, uh, changing the, the zip code, which actually means changing the boundary of one of the post offices, um, one of the staff people, I don't remember who it was that we contacted first, said, "Oh, you know, don't even bother. This is, you know, you're never going to get the post office to change the boundaries. They just don't do that." And I remember thinking, "Hmm, you obviously don't know Erwin Mack." And, uh, I do remember that, um, once it happened, um, and I believe it was somebody from, um, Al Wynn's office, who was our congressional representative at that time, said, "Boy, this is the first time I've ever seen anybody be successful with one of these efforts." And, you know, we can, um, we can chalk that up. It's one of, one of the achievements that few people are able to accomplish and, uh, being responsibly persistent, you, um, actually got the post office boundary changed, which up against the post office, probably most people wouldn't have been able to do that. So...
And, and Erwin was also Santa Claus, uh, in a number of efforts, including, uh, various holiday parties for, uh, kids with the recreation department and the police department upstairs. And I know also over at the, uh, recreation center on New Hampshire Avenue, uh, so a lot of effort in that.
And it worked for him.
So, just multifaceted. And, and I hope your head still fits in your hat.
Um, the, uh, resolution is before the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes unanimously. What I, unanimously. What I'd like to do, Erwin, is I'd like to have you come up here for a photo op and then, uh, we'll let you add whatever you would care to add.
Thank you very much for everything that, I really appreciate it. All the work that you've done. Thank you, the quarter. Thank you for the photo op. Like this. Thank you for an unexpected, but a much appreciated period of time this evening in reminiscing. Nothing that I've done could be done without partnership of many people. Many of them are sitting here. No one person can be successful until you have a team that works with you. And strangely enough, I want to recognize two people, one in particular, who's not expecting me to say what I'm going to say. My son Bill is sitting over here. Bill, stand up for a minute, please. Some people have never met you. During the fourteen years that I owned Dennis Sleep Shop and Bill worked with me, had it not been for Bill's willingness to carry more of the load than ordinarily he would have, so that I could type on my Remington manual to get things going twenty-three years ago, we might not have made it. Scores and scores and scores of things that I wrote on that Remington manual, cause I finally got an IPN Selectric and thought I'd died and gone to heaven. And of course, today, it's so much easier on the computer. But it's because of Bill and his long-suffering mother, my first wife, she'll be over here, who allowed me to spend extra evenings away from the house, working on that typewriter, just because the community said, the local community at that time said, "We want this. Will you help us?" And I appreciate the fact that my educational background in being a school teacher and ultimately a school principal, allowed me to have the information necessary to work with boards, which many people haven't had the pressure of doing. And that's not an easy thing because boards are very legalistic sometimes and they expect to be and must be. And unless you can work with them, things don't get done. So thank you for having given me an opportunity, particularly in retirement years, to do things that are genuinely a still a pleasure. And I have reservations for my walker to get on the first bus in the transit center when it eventually comes to the crossroads. So thank you kindly for having been friends and coworkers and allowing me to be one of the same.
Well, thank you, Erwin. I think what we will do at this point is we will take a very short break. I want to do the farmer's market recognition, but I want to make sure that I wait until the market manager is here and I understand that she may be a little bit late. And so what I think I'll do is we'll take our break right now and then I'll do the next, uh, recognition, uh, when she gets here a little bit later in the evening. when she gets here a little bit later in the evening. Let's see. The first reading of an ordinance revising the Tacoma Park Code Commercial District Facade Regulations, is that yours, Sarah?
As noted at last week's meeting, the facade advisory board is in the process of reviewing the guidelines which it works under when it reviews projects that have an impact on the exterior appearance of commercial properties in Old Tacoma and, excuse me, Old Town and Tacoma Junction. The, the section of the ordinance that they've initially decided to tackle, given the nature of some of the recent review projects, is the sign section. And as we noted during the discussion at the last workshop, what this is intended to do is to provide some clarity in terms of what types of design features the facade advisory board will be reviewing as it considers sign proposals. The original ordinance was very technical in nature and repeated, frankly, much of the language in the zoning ordinance as far as signage, and as the city of Tacoma Park does not have authority for zoning measures, which are basically bulk standards, we decided to move it back into more design features as far as to lettering and size and shape and materials. There was one section in there that council member Williams had brought to our attention, number nine regarding the limited duration signs, and after discussion with the facade board members, we've rewritten that, so it just specifically references the county zoning ordinance.
Are there any council questions or anything for, okay, do we, do you want to move?
I'm moving.
Second. All right, are there any questions or comments on the facade ordinance? Colleen?
Last time, I brought up a couple of questions about some of the signage issues where people are, you know, doing the sandwich board signs and things like that. And then, while I was out at the street festival this weekend, I noticed there was a banner sign on a, on a house that I don't think is compliant, in compliance. What relationship does this have to that kind of enforcement? So what you're saying, if I heard you correctly, my brain will get fuzzy tonight, that we don't, we're not doing anything that's related to zoning, and those are, that's a standards-based approach?
These are just-
But this is, this is, can you tell me more about how, how that's separate and what our authority is? I'm not clear on it.
The city of Tacoma Park does not have zoning authority.
Right.
The zoning authority rests with the county. If you elected to have zoning authority, then you'd have to sort of disassociate yourself with that particular zoning ordinance, go through and adopt your own zoning ordinance, and then you'd have to establish a staff that would enforce the zoning requirements. It's my understanding there's been discussion about that in past years, and that isn't something that the council is interested in pursuing.
Right, no, sounds expensive. So this isn't zoning, but what is it-
These are, these are design features that are intended to provide some of that guidance in those areas where you have a little flexibility about the way a sign looks.
So this is just guidance?
These are guidance. What they do is they look at them and-
It's not something that we would send the enforcement police out to deal with? This is just trying to get people to comply?
Well, I, I think we can enforce it, though.
We can enforce it in the sense that, say I have a business, I come to the facade advisory board, they approve my proposed sign, their recommendations are forwarded to the historic, the historic preservation commission, who actually issues the historic area work permit, which becomes part of the sign permit that the county issues under the zoning authority.
Okay, so do we have authority because this is part of a historic district process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, there's no additional questions, the ordinance has been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on this ordinance? All right, since this is the first reading of the ordinance, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes at first reading.
Thank you. The second reading is scheduled for October 22nd.
Okay, and I see that the Tacoma, Tacoma Park Farmer's Market, market manager is here. Do you, shall we do the former, the formal thing? Do you want to, yep, you're, you're up next. Do you want to talk a little bit about the activities that are going to be happening next Sunday, and tell us a little bit about the, the 25th anniversary and all that sort of thing?
I would be happy to. The Tacoma Park Farmer's Market is a major cultural, social event in this area, as you all know, and I've been a member of that market for 24 of the 25 years. I recently looked over the history of the market, and some of the vendors who are, who were the founding members are still in the market, and they are very involved with keeping the market going. It's, it's one of the best markets in the country. I think it's one of the only ones that is actually run by farmers or the people who are the vendors there. We have gotten a lot of very good attention from all over the country because of some of the innovative things we have done. We started the new crossroads market up in Langley Park this year, which has been a major accomplishment, and we've gotten a lot of good publicity over that because we've made it possible to- We will only be doing something that will be official starting at 1:00. We're also going to have music, and it's going to be by another Tacoma Park person, Ruthie Loggson. And so it's going to be another very Tacoma Park-like event.
So that, so you're saying that there's going to be events throughout the entire market time, but the formal, you know, recognition of the 25th anniversary is going to start at 1:00?
1:00, yes.
Okay.
People will be able to participate in the scavenger hunt or be able to read the history and look at photographs throughout the market. And we were interested in getting, you know, people who are office holders to come throughout, you know, all during the market so you can meet people and go around and talk to people because people do like to see their council members there.
Mm-hmm, I can tell you that for sure. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And in recognition of the 25th anniversary, we have a resolution.
I'd love to introduce it.
Okay, let me just read the resolution here. Whereas the Tacoma Park Farmer's Market was organized in 1983 as the Washington area's first Sunday farmer's market and was an early pioneer in the producers-only movement; and whereas the market began with eight vendors selling fruits, vegetables, plants, flowers, and herbs; and whereas over the years, other food, food and agricultural products were added, including Tacoma kitchens; but the market has remained a local producers-only market, selling items which must be produced within 125 mile, 125-mile radius of Tacoma Park; and whereas in addition to providing a year-round source of local fresh food, fresh food products, I'm sorry, I'm having Colleen's problem. The market is the center of community activity in Tacoma Park, bringing residents and others together each week to shop and socialize; and whereas the market's success provides an anchor for other local businesses who benefit from increased pedestrian traffic and activity in the area. And whereas the close of the market on Sundays, market vendors have a tradition of donating perishable goods to Shepherd's Table to benefit needy people in the area. Shepherd's Table is our local soup kitchen. And whereas Tacoma Park Farmer's Market members worked with others to open the Crossroads Farmer's Market to encourage immigrant and minority growers in the area and to make the fresh, locally grown foods available to the diverse community in the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads area. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland hereby recognizes and celebrates the 25th anniversary of the Tacoma Park Farmer's Market as a source of fresh, locally grown food and as an important community asset. And it's been moved and seconded. Is there anything anyone else on the council would like to add?
Just, I just had a thought, and I guess I'll put it in the form of a question. I know that at one point we designated that as the Ward Sinclair Plaza, and the sign went up. Is that sign still up? Or did that sign disappear in the, in the rebuild of the area?
I think it's a very good question, and that's something that I should look at on Sunday. But we should put that sign back up because Ward was one of the early vital vendors at that market. And I know all the people who are currently vendors, I remember them quite fondly, but we should do something about that.
Maybe the acting city manager can put that on the list of things to follow up on, the Ward Sinclair sign at, basically in the Laurel Avenue Plaza. Anyone else?
I just also want to say how, how very proud I am that this market is here in our town. It does so well reflect the values of Tacoma Park as well as many of our producers and residents. And I'm, I'm certain that it will continue for another 25 and then some.
That's what we're planning on.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any public comment on this ordinance?
Yes, I just got, what, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue. I just got one question about the farmer's market. Do you know what the average attendance at this farmer's market is? And if it's gone up or down in recent years?
It has gone drastically up. We don't take any attendance figures, but we do keep records of the expenditures of people at the market, and that has actually been facilitated by this remote debiting system we have. And people are using that to make purchases. And so we can get some rough numbers that tell us that people are using that system more and more.
And there's more farmers use it?
Well, more farmers can't use it because the space of the market is limited, which raises another entire issue, but I'm not going to go into that tonight.
Yeah.
It would take up too much time.
Plans.
But, but yes, the market is very, very, very popular. And one of the good things, things that is happening right now is we are drawing a lot more new, younger customers into the market. It used to be that the market customers were largely older, but that is not the case anymore. And so people are very definitely interested in the whole local fresh food movement. And that's obvious to us from watching the people who are coming to that market. People want things that are fresh and local.
Yes, that's great.
Great to know that, also fresh flowers.
You bet.
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments on the resolution? All right, seeing none, the resolution is before the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes unanimously. Do you want me to bring this to the market?
I was going to say, yes, I would love to have that as part of the display.
Okay.
Because...
You want it now?
Well, either, either way. I mean, I don't even know exactly how I'm going to do my little display yet. I'm going to have some kind of a display table, photographs.
Okay, well, why don't, why don't I give it to you now and then?
You could do a ceremonial presentation.
If you want, we can, we can re-present it. If whatever, I'll leave it up to you, whatever you want to do. This will be the, the informal, and then we can have a formal if you want at the market on Sunday. I'll be there.
Well, yeah, that would be great. I, I think, you know, anything we can do that shows the continued support of the council would be great. And, you know, that would be, I'd be happy to do that. And I think, you know, the other, the people who are the vendors there would be happy to see that, too.
Okay.
I mean, we, you know, the, the vendors by and large are very aware of all the support the people on the city council have given us. And they, admittedly, every single vendor is very, very, very busy, and they may never ever say hello or thank you, but we do know who has been helping us. And, you know, a lot of that has to do with the fact that I happen to live in Tacoma Park, and so does John. But, you know, we know, you know, what's been going on.
Well, we, we very much appreciate that, and certainly the market has been a big asset to the Old Town area for all of its 25 years. Let me give this to you, and then we can do a formal presentation on Sunday if you want, or however you want to handle it, if you want to put it on the board or, you know, but I'm going to be there, and I'd be happy to do the formal presentation then if you want.
I think my suggestion will be to Chip Plank. Chip Plank is going to make a very, very brief speech, and I think it would be appropriate for him at that point to introduce people who have been important. And then we can, I think it would be a good thing to do, introduce you, you could say...
Here it is.
Here it is. Ta-da!
Yeah, I know, I know you, you don't really want to sort of have a whole afternoon of speeches, but, you know, I can do it really fast. So I want to give this to you, though, to make, make sure that you have it if you need it, so.
I would be happy to do it.
Thank you, thank you for the, all the work you're doing on the market.
Well, I'm happy to do it. I'm very, very locked into the whole farmer's market thing, and I, you know, I, I'm happy to come out and see y'all, so I'll see y'all on Sunday. Thanks.
And we should say that Louise and John are also the proprietors of Tacoma Kitchens, and they have been one of the mainstays of the market for many, many years. Not that I, not that I push one vendor over another, but among the wonderful fruits and vegetables, there's also a very fine bakery there.
I think my children eat breakfast there every Sunday morning.
Oh, I always have my second breakfast there, yes. The strawberry cream cheese croissants are unique and, and non, not able to be replicated.
And, and no calories?
Yeah, well, you know, bakery has any calories. Okay, let's see, we are moving on to the ordinance, contract for mechanics toolbox replacement. And, and while you're coming up, both Bruce and I noted that these toolboxes are very unique because they have plier sets in them instead of flyer sets.
I don't know what it is either. That's my assumption, it's flyer.
I wonder what that was? It's a special tool.
Bruce knows what they are, but I'd never heard of them before.
Mechanic secrets. Yes, this is an issue that the mechanic supervisor has been promoting and pushing for quite some time, and we've held off on it, but it really is time. As any of you that have tools know, after a while, they wear out. We have two sets of mechanic toolboxes, which are not like anybody's home toolboxes, are very large, probably five, six feet tall sectioned boxes that have the whole range of tools that they use for repairing the vehicles and repairing the equipment that we have within the facility. I don't believe we've replaced them since I've been at Public Works. So this is an effort to revamp the tools, improve the working conditions, and just get, get things on a plane. Because of the cost, and any of you that have tried to buy one of those pull drawer toolboxes that are just three, three drawers, they're a couple hundred bucks, two, three hundred bucks, just for a little teeny one. So the cost is, is very high, and the tools themselves are very high-quality tools. When we did the request for proposals, we were bidding for, again, the same items, so we were, you know, apples to apples, oranges to oranges, and screwdrivers to screwdrivers, making sure that each vendor was offering the same set of tools and the same type of configuration in terms of the box itself.
And that they all included pliers?
Yeah, right, they absolutely used the pliers. So this is, we've spread it out over two years. This expenditure will just be for one complete set, and then next year in the capital budget is the second set. So that's what's, that's what's in front of you now. Again, it was already budgeted, you all included it in the capital budget when you did the budget for this year, so we've simply gone through the process of bidding, and now we'd like to award a prize.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions from the council? Is Colleen?
What happens to the old toolbox?
Well, for those tools that can be used and are still have some value, they'll probably just blend them into the existing toolbox, or they'll go to another division, either the rideaway division or building maintenance division. We'll share whatever tools they need.
Any other questions? Okay. Are there any public comments on this? This is a single reading ordinance since it was also part of the budget. All right, seeing none, this is the single reading ordinance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilor Berry. Councilor Clay.
Aye.
Councilor Seaver.
Aye.
Councilor Wood.
I'll vote aye as long as the council gets the pliers.
I'll drop them off.
Okay. And the next item is the contract for liquid chemical spreaders. And this includes the chemicals as well as the spreaders?
Yes, it, it's primarily the system itself for the treatment of snow and ice. And just to give brief background, I don't want to get into too much detail, but this is something the city's been considering for many years, and we've kind of been looking at the industry to see sort of who's moving this direction. The use of alternatives to the standard road salt and sand because of the potential environmental implications of those items is one of the reasons why liquid treatment is becoming more and more popular. Though I must say, it's, it's, it has its use in specific instances. It can, it's not a do-all, take-all for every type of snow and ice response. Basically, your liquid chemical treatment provides a couple of advantages over the rock salt and the sand. One, and the way we'd be using it primarily is it enables you to pre-treat, to treat ahead of a storm. So when you know there's going to be freezing temperatures, or there are freezing temperatures, and a storm is predicted, and we know with fairly good certainty that it's coming, we can apply this to the streets. The spreaders and the cells, actually, there's a tank that sits on the truck, and there's a bar that goes across the back of the truck with holes in it. And so there's a pumping mechanism, and it dispenses the liquid. What you get there is a more even spread of the chemical itself that can be pretty much confined to the road surface, whereas now with the salt and sand, we oftentimes have overspray that hits cars, goes on the curb, hits the, the rideaway and can, you know, cause some problems.
Kills grass.
Yeah, with beyond the curb. It's hard to adjust and regulate those spreaders. So this application tends to be more specific to the road. It enables you to treat advance of a storm so that in particular conditions, you've got your, your chemical already on the road surface, and that when the, the snow or the ice starts to form, it's already, you know, doing its job in terms of making the roadway safer. The other advantage is, once you've gone to a system like this, you can do things called pre-wetting, which is once you have the liquid on the street, then when you apply the sand or the salt, it tends to stay in place better, doesn't bounce off or roll off. So there's some pre-wetting advantages to it. There will be times where we'll still use the sand and salt, of course, that we, that we're prepared to use and use that equipment. This equipment itself will be fairly easy to get on and off the trucks. Again, it's a tank that will hold the material, which is a plastic tank, and then the, the spreading bar itself. So there'll be particular storms and types of storms where we'll use this. We first envisioned it was many years ago, and the cost was much higher then. We had budgeted $30,000. We thought that was going to give us setup with one system. As it turns out, we think we can get two systems now, one for a large truck and one for a small truck, which will give us the opportunity to hit more of the cities. And we would, again, like with most storms, primarily be doing hills and surfaces where we have a higher concern about ice during winter conditions. And then the tank can be, the liquid can be pumped off, and that plastic storage unit can be pulled off, and the normal spreader can be put on. So it, it won't interfere with operations to, to much degree other than shifting from one to the other. We're excited for the opportunity to kind of broaden our treatment options in sand and salt, and we'll see what this winter provides us. Basically, this price of $12,650 will give us a large 500-gallon spreading equipment as well as a smaller, almost 300-gallon equipment and the two spreading bars that dispense the liquid. The storage containers themselves and the liquid will be purchased, like we do with our regular supplies. That's not included in here, but we estimate it costs about $2,000 for that. The storage containers themselves for the material is, is kind of a package deal when you buy the chemicals, the liquid chemicals. The spreaders themselves, actually, there's a tank that sits on the truck and there's a bar that goes across the back of the truck with holes in it and so there's a pumping mechanism and it dispenses the liquid. What you get there is a more even spread of the chemical itself that can be pretty much confined to the road surface, whereas now with the salt and sand, we oftentimes have overspray that hits cars, goes on the curb, it's the, the rideaway and can, you know--
Kills grass.
Yeah, with, beyond the curb. It's hard to adjust and regulate those spreaders. So this application tends to be more specific to the road. It enables you to treat advance of a storm so that in particular conditions, you've got your, your chemical already on the road surface and that when the, the snow or the ice starts to form, it's already, you know, doing its job in terms of making the roadway safer. The other advantage is, once you've gone to a system like this, you can do things called pre-wetting, which is once you have the liquid on the street, then when you apply the sand or the salt, it tends to stay in place better, doesn't bounce off or roll off, so there's some pre-wetting advantages to it. There will be times where we'll still use the sand and salt, of course, that we, that we're prepared to use and use that equipment. This equipment itself will be fairly easy to get on and off the trucks. Again, it's a tank that will hold the material, which is a plastic tank, and then the, the spreading bar itself. So there'll be particular storms and types of storms where we'll use this. We first envisioned it was many years ago and the cost was much higher then. We had budgeted $30,000. We thought that was going to give us setup with one system. As it turns out, we think we can get two systems now, one for a large truck and one for a small truck, which will give us the opportunity to hit more of the cities and we would, again, like with most storms, primarily be doing hills and surfaces where we have a higher concern about ice during winter conditions. And then the tank can be, the liquid can be pumped off and that plastic storage unit can be pulled off and the normal spreader can be put on, so it, it won't interfere with operations to, to much degree other than shifting from one to the other. We're excited for the opportunity to kind of broaden our treatment options in sand and salt and we'll see what this winter provides us. Basically, this price of $12,650 will give us a large 500 gallon spreading equipment as well as a smaller, almost 300 gallon equipment and the two spreading bars that dispense the liquid. The storage containers themselves and the liquid will be purchased like we do with our regular supplies, that's not included in here, but we estimate a cost of about $2,000 for that. The storage containers themselves for the material is, is kind of a package deal when you buy the chemicals, the liquid chemical, they provide you the tanks that, that hold the material throughout the season. We'll be able to store these items right alongside of the new salt dome that we have in our facility, so all these things will be kept together in that same area. It'll be a treatment area that's accessible and usable during the snow and ice.
Two questions. This is coming in way below budgeted amount, right? Because 12,000 doesn't get doubled to give us--
No, no, right, that, yeah, they're, each, one is, you know, they're both around $6,000, one is slightly higher cost than the others.
That's great. I know you're always thinking about environmental impact of Public Works activities. Can you say a little bit about how this compares?
Sure. Well, again, I haven't polished up on my chemistry too recently, but the research that we've done previously when we first started developing this idea, salt itself, you know, sodium chloride, potassium chloride is normally what we have on, on hand with the rock salt type materials that we use. It tends to be much more aggressive as a, as an agent in terms of its potential to destruct metal, concrete, plant materials. The liquid chemical spreader is a different type of, of element. It's generally magnesium chloride, so slightly less toxic to other salts. If the council's interested in getting some information, there's copious quantities of information both available from the EPA as well as the manufacturers' products and I could produce those to show you sort of the pluses and minuses, the benefits. They have a different range of temperatures that they work within. Clearly, if you have a six inch, 12 inch snowstorm, you're not going to be doing liquid treatment. You're going to be plowing streets and clearing the roadways. The liquid treatment tends to be in advance of snow and also very effective with ice, more so than the salt itself, the hard, hard salt and sand.
Great. Any other questions?
Is it been moved?
I don't believe so. Would you like to second it? Is that what you--
Bruce just seconded.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Daryl, for bringing this to us and I, as I understand from what you said, that the, the protection that we installed to protect the dry chemicals is not being negated, the need for that's not being negated with this purchase, right?
No, no. Well, still, I'm sure it goes through 200 to 400 tons of salt, which is our average on each way.
Okay. And with that said, one of the problems, and I'm glad to hear that this is environmentally okay--
Well, it's, it's less, less environmentally harmful than the traditional rock salt. It's still, you know, any chemical has its, its negatives.
Right, but I've heard a lot of concern over the last few years with the amount of rock salt that is, just ends up in piles on our roads that is not environmentally good and we know it's not, but yet we continue to have that problem year after year and I wonder what steps are being taken to minimize that in the future.
Well, usually when that happens on a rev surface, it's a malfunction of the equipment. Generally, what's happening is there's some kind of clog within the mechanism itself that's spreading the salt or, you know, there's an operator error that creates a pile of salt that's disposed from the truck itself. So first and foremost is, is operator education, you know, just working with our staff to make sure they understand what they're doing and what they have and make sure they have the tools on hand on the trucks, shovels, et cetera, so that if they do have a spill or they had a mechanical breakdown and have had to, you know, discharge some salt on the ground, that they can then shovel it back up and, and take care of it. Not to pass the buck, but one of the places we see the problem is on state highways. Many times over than what you'll see on the city's residential streets. I haven't had the conversation with state highway, but it probably would be a good one to have to try to work with them on ways that they can deal with the same problems that we have if they have mechanical problems or, you know, bad pothole that a truck hits and, you know, overfall, the salt or sand overfalls out of the truck.
Just given the, our experiences we've seen over the past several years, I think we need to do something, whether it's with our own staff or with the state or both.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess the wet chemicals would be a little less obvious.
It will be, it will be and it'll be something we'll have to monitor. Again, it'll be a brand new experience for us, so we'll be trying to keep records in terms of application. We're taking a look at some other, other tools that we can use. There's now sensors that sense, you can mount them on the truck and they sense the road temperature, so they can tell you based on the temperature what's their, your most appropriate avenue of, of treatment, whether you should go to a hard salt or whether the liquid treatment. And, and again, it just is trying to demystify the process and use science in a way that uses least amount of chemicals, provides most amount of safe road surface for the drivers.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? One, one thing it sounds like you're working toward is a more flexible set of options so that rather than just doing the same thing for all storms, you've got more options there that you can tailor them better to exactly what the conditions of the storm would be, the amount of precipitation and the, the temperature.
One of the things that I felt to mention is not only will it give us the alternative of treatment methods on the road, but both these types of equipment have hoses that extend beyond and so we'll be exploring sidewalk treatment in the same measures, pre-treatment of sidewalks and whatnot. And I can only think that if we have a storm this winter like we did last winter when we had that extensive freeze, when there were like three or four or five days of super cold temperature and we had snow stacked up and it wasn't going anywhere, having this as an option, it's something we certainly would have tried to, you know, clear the sidewalks faster than we were able to do in, in some locations. So it'll give us a few, a few options there as well and we'll be using them largely in the public areas around the city building, the library, the commercial areas of Old Town, the junction, you know, along the sidewalks on New Hampshire Avenue and Flower Avenue, sort of the areas where we go to first when we're trying to clear sidewalks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, this has been moved and seconded. Any public comments on this ordinance? All right, seeing none. This is a single reading ordinance because it was also in the budget. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Berry. Counselor Clay.
Aye.
Counselor Reziver.
Aye.
Counselor Reziver.
Aye.
The ordinance passes, single reading ordinance passes. Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the first reading of the ordinance that appoints judges for the city election.
Second.
Is there anything you'd like to add, Jesse?
I expect we'll have at least five or judges added to this for secondary. We're not exactly sure how many judges we'll need at this point, but we'll make a decision by the end of the week.
Okay, and this, this ordinance includes 15 judges and also the three members of the city's Board of Elections who will also be serving as judges. And all of them, I remember when we interviewed them, all of them are very experienced election judges. Okay, does someone want to move this?
It's been done.
I'm sorry, it's already been done. All right, are there any council comments on the ordinance? Any public comments on the ordinance? All right, seeing none. This is the first reading. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Ordinance passes at first reading. The next item, the next item is a first reading of an ordinance which amends the previous ordinance. Normally, the council has a, well, we always have a special meeting on the day following the election to receive the certification of election, of results from the election judges. We set the time for that meeting at 7:30. Subsequently realized that there was a conflict with another event that I know a number of the members of council would like to attend and so thought maybe we would push the time of the special meeting up to seven. Special meetings required in the, in the city charter, but it's not, the time of it isn't set by charter, it's set by the ordinance. So I think what we'll do is move the time of the ordinance, I mean, the time of the meeting up to seven instead of 7:30 and that's what the proposal in this particular ordinance is.
Move the ordinance.
Maybe I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments on this ordinance? Any public comments on the ordinance? All right, this is the first reading. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Ordinance passes at first reading. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance regarding the budget. This is the first budget amendment for fiscal '08, which is the fiscal year that we're in right now. We normally during the fiscal year, which begins July 1 and goes to June 30, we normally have a number of budget amendments over the course of the year as things happen and money needs to be moved from one account to the other. Was someone going to summarize the budget ordinance?
How do you summarize it? A lot of the actions have already been before the council and this is the book you think to keep it straight. It covers the money for the emergency repairs of the Maple Street sidewalk over the side of Creek. It handles the council compensation, if we could put more money in there. It also deals with the signage for this building and the tree, tree sales citizens default, default buy for that. And it's an accounting move to move monies around that were approved for the police vehicles. It doesn't add any money or that is the accounting process that the auditors have recommended to follow. And it includes some additional grant money that we didn't know about at the beginning of the budget.
I'll give it.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Bruce?
Wayne, could we have a extra bit of information for second reading so that we know that we have a little accounting of what's coming out of the unappropriated reserves and what's left?
It has to be amended to show where the money's coming from and going.
But I think, I think--
That's not all of your idea. I understand what you're saying.
I think, Bruce, one of the things that the city manager is going to give us in her next quarterly report is that item, but we could certainly have it at second reading.
Yeah.
You're talking about what's left of the unappropriated--
Yes, yes. So--
What's left of the unappropriated money?
Because some, some of this is from unappropriated and it's early in the fiscal year to do it, so we need to know what we're moving around there.
Okay. Any other questions? Any council comments on the ordinance? Any public--
Other questions?
I'm sorry, Colleen?
So all of these, this is a lot of, this is a lot of transfers going on at one time.
Right.
What's the Harts and Home Youth Program?
Yeah, I think that's the grant money. There's a number of projects that were in the fiscal '07 budget but weren't completed in fiscal '07. What normally happens, and I think this is one of them, is that the project and the monies get moved to fiscal '08. It doesn't change anything. It just means that something was supposed to happen in '07, it's done in '08, but in order to make that possible, the money has to go from '07 to '08 to pay for it. And I, and I believe that's what that is.
It's revenue, so it's money we got as a grant?
I believe so and I believe that the monies, that the, that the activities were done. So it's just, it's just matching the money, the time of the money for the time of the activity, is that right, Wayne?
I believe that's correct.
And this is, this is something that happens every year in spite of all one's best projections, you have things that end up not happening when you thought they were, so we just want to make sure that the activity and the money match in terms of time.
I recognize all the other items on there, but I just didn't recognize that.
Any other questions? Any, any public comments on this ordinance? Okay, this is the first reading of this budget amendment. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. The ordinance passes at first reading. And then the final item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda provides for appointments to the Arts and Humanities Commission, the Ethics Commission and the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee. All of these are reappointments of current members. As the council decided some time back, we no longer are going to interview current members requesting reappointment. We're going to get our information about the activities of the committees through committee reports, so the appointments are being made as part of the consent agenda. Does someone want to move the consent agenda?
So move.
Okay, the consent agenda is not subject to discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. The consent agenda passes and we are finished early. Without objection, we're adjourned.
Could this be recorded in the record book, please?
It's not the first time we want to--